I could do with the coffees. That work good for you? That work okay? Welcome everyone to our fourth town hall meeting. Appreciate everyone coming tonight. And this is, real quickly, this is a very laid back, relaxed event. You can ask anything you want. You can't offend us. You can't make us upset. If it's concerning you, we should be willing to answer your questions, concerns you have, and give you hopefully direction if you need so. We're going to change it a little bit this time. And I'll tell you go. First off, as we go around introducing ourselves, especially our department heads that you see up here, I'm going to ask each one of them to introduce themselves. Talk what department they're with, maybe how long they've been with the department. And more importantly, talk a little bit about what the department does. Because we're so used to it, we say, oh, go see community development. Most people go, what's community development? What does that mean? What do they do? Why would I see them? So, we'll do that a little different, just get everyone introduced. So Maggie, I'm going to start with you. Work around. So go ahead Maggie.
My name is Maggie Jablonski. I'm the deputy village manager. So I work in the village manager's office. Can't hear me. I've been with the village for about 10 years. The village manager's office acts in a few capacities. Primarily, we take the policy direction from the village board and work with the other departments to carry that out. We also are the primary for communications with the public as well as residential waste services.
Thank you Maggie, go ahead.
I'm Ken Jay. I'm our deputy director of public works. Our public works department is responsible for maintenance of our public infrastructure, our streets, our water towers and water mains, our sanitary sewer, storm sewer. And we're also responsible for the capital projects throughout the village.
Jared Poloney, the director of community development. So, community development houses the building, engineering and health divisions. We are responsible for all private property development for permits and inspections. And we also have a property maintenance component under us. We'll handle any property maintenance concerns throughout the village.
Good evening. My name is Christine Trump. I'm actually the finance director. I've been with the village 20 years now. We are responsible for the money coming in and going out. Most people though, will probably deal with the finance department with water billing. So that is one of our, also our primary concerns. Thank you.
I'm Nathan Gack. I am the acting fire chief. I've been with the village for 24 years. The fire department, in addition to handling emergency responses, also has an inspection program that helps us do community risk reduction through inspections and permitting of new buildings.
Good evening. My name's Richard Michael. I'm the director of the police department. I've been with the village for 11 years, been assigned to the police department for about the last five months. The role of the police department first and foremost is to prevent crimes from happening. So we do that by making sure buildings are safe in the way they're designed. We get education programs out to our children, education programs out to senior citizens and adults, protect homes and businesses from bad things happening. But then the second part of what the folks do is investigate crimes when they do happen. So when there is an incident that takes place, our folks will come out and investigate and try and find the cause, try and find the people who committed the crime, and take care of prosecuting from there. Thank you.
Good evening, Matt Roan. I'm the village manager. Been with the village for 23 years, the last year and a half in the position as village manager. In addition to overseeing the day to day operations of the entire village, one of my key functions is business development and recruitment.
My name is Steve Schmidt, village trustee. I've been a trustee for, I'm in my second term, so for a little less than five years. And prior to that, I was on the police department for 41 and a half years.
And a former chief.
And a former police chief for 17 years, right.
Hi, my name is Tammy Miller. I was appointed village trustee in November of 2021 to serve the remaining months of the term of Nancy Zarnick. And then I was elected this year in 2023. So I'm kind of a newbie. But before that, I was a director at Elk Grove Park District.
Chris Prochnow. I was elected in 1997, so I've been a trustee for 26 years. Before that I served, oh, thank you. It's been a great 26 years. Before that, I had four years on the planning commission, and before that, two years on the zoning board. So when I finished my term this time around, I have 28 years as a trustee, and it's been a wonderful, wonderful run.
Kathy Jerisch. I was elected and became a trustee this past May.
Prior to that, I served on the library board as a library trustee for two years.
My name's Jeff Frankie. I've been involved in the village for 26 years. I was nine years on the zoning board and it'll be 17 years on the village board as a trustee coming up this next summer, so.
Okay. Well, again, we just want to introduce ourselves again. This is a very relaxed event. And it comes off of our coffees with the board. We've done that now for 27 years. And we've been getting more and more busy all the time. So that's why we started doing some town halls to help people on nighttime, they'll come or they have issues. And again, it's very informal. But people brought up some issues in the past. One lady had an issue, I think with a neighbor over on the west side with a motorhome. And we got it resolved. But she brought it to us, she was frustrated, and we're glad to help her with it. So that's what we do. But I'm going to do one little different this time. Normally I do the questions first of people that are here. We'll get to everyone's question. But tonight, because in the past we haven't always had time to get it all done, we're going to do first the questions that were submitted to us in advance. They won't take that long, but we'd like to walk through them. So I'll start off with the first question. The first question was submitted, the issue we had at 290 and Beasterfield Road, the evening where we had the helicopter, the lights, the police and all that. I know we've talked about it in a board meeting, I know we've talked about it on Facebook, we talked about it on websites. One last, this may have come about the same time, but I'll go through it again. That was a situation we should have handled differently as far as notification to the public. We walk a very fine line. Times we can't give things out because it could compromise our ability to catch the people involved, can compromise the ability to prevent something for the future. But always remember this, everyone that works for the village, your safety is first. Your safety is first. We should have handled that differently. Your safety was never at risk. I didn't say this, but there's two perpetrators got away. There are Uber's gone like that. But with the helicopter and all the police making sure of things, we should have notified you quicker. But your risk, your safety was never at risk. But we gotta be better how we get information out. I've apologized for it. We reset up how we do things, and we'll make sure in the future that doesn't happen again. So that takes care of that one. Question two was, Chris?
Another question that was asked was, resolving, entering the Jewel parking lot from Beasterfield. When you turn in off of Beasterfield onto Commercial Drive where the bank is, it's a very tight turn. That immediate right turn lane, this resident was concerned about safety issues and questioned whether that lane could be widened, or if it could be moved down further, or something be done about it. Interestingly enough, we have no control over that because it is private property. Both the police did do a study, and in the last three years, there have only been two minor accidents at that intersection. So I think the problem that we have is that people are coming in very quickly off, turning on off of Beasterfield onto the, onto the drive there, and they have, find themselves having to quickly slow down to make that turn. But there's nothing that we can do about it since it is private property and owned by the developer.
Question three, who's got?
I have that one. So this also is in regards to a turn on Beasterfield, turning right onto Beisner if you're heading west. This person had a concern that there are bikers and pedestrians on that intersection. And is there something that we could, that we do about it? And we are. The, the police department has reviewed that intersection at Beisner and Beasterfield, right turns at this location. We do continue to monitor that intersection.
Questions four? Jeff?
This is a question I'm asked a lot. Are we ever getting a Popeyes? Most important question you're going to hear tonight. And we've been talking about this, back in August of '22, the planning commission approved a Popeyes going into the town center parking lot over by the Dollar Store. And that, and then it's just been one thing after another. It is still approved and they're still planning on coming. We talked to them again, and they told us that they're anticipating starting, breaking ground, this is their saying, in the spring of 2024. So we're hoping in spring it starts. They're not backing out, according to them. So hopefully we'll have some chicken sandwiches by summer.
Thank you. Next.
I have question number five, which has to do with the vacancy of the Sears Hardware spot that has been vacant for a long time. And I too have wondered why, you know, why hasn't this been filled? And I learned a lot by digging into it. When that area was developed, the Jewel was built first, and that property gained several governances that stipulated what other businesses and things could come into that property. So while the Sears Hardware building is owned by a different developer, the restrictions and what goes in there plays a huge part into what type of businesses could come in. It's my understanding that several businesses have approached the village or have approached the, the owner of that location and have wanted to relocate there. A liquor store, a fresh market with fruits and vegetables type store. However, because of the restrictions with Jewel, neither one of those followed the governances that would be allowed there. So, you know, unfortunately, until the right type of business comes along that, that could assume that tenant location, it's there. And I know, it's not exciting to see it go by like that. But let's, we'll keep reviewing, and, you know, hopefully someone with the right requirements will make it in there someday.
Next.
Somebody emailed us about Marshall Park. They're going to be doing Marshall Park and putting in some equipment over there, and they're putting a fence around there. People are asking why. That fence was requested to the park district by the people who live on boardwalk because they, they were afraid that when people go to the park to visit the things that are going to be placed into the park, that they would be parking on, in boardwalk, and they're not want them parking by their homes over there. So that's why the fence is going up, so that the people, they'll be parking in the front of the, in front of the park along Marshall, along Chelmsford there. So they want the people visiting the park to park their cars there and not in the boardwalk parking lot. So that's why the fence is going up at the request of the, park district is putting it up at the request of the association, the Boardwalk Association.
Trustee Frankie?
I'd just like to add that they were talked to also about a gate going into their parking lot to go from boardwalk into the park. And the association said they did not want one. So they were going to put a gate into, so that people in the boardwalk condominiums could go into the park, but they asked that we, or the park district not do it. So that was the association's choice, not ours.
So if people upset, mainly people live in boardwalk, if they're upset, don't complain to park district, don't complain to the village, complain to your association. They're the ones who are adamant not to put in a gate. They did not want people parking on their parking lot using that park. So, and they had that right. So talk to them, you know, we had to do it. Tammy?
Well, from the park district point of view too, a fence is used as security. So when they do construction for things that are going to be built there, they also need security as well. So I just wanted to add that part.
Okay. Question seven?
Steve, that's you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Question seven was discussed about, there were several questions that had already been answered, but one was about Talbot's Mill. And it was a request that the police department look into taking overnight parking enforcement there. It has been lax there this summer because they've been doing seal coating work there. So people cannot park into their driveways or in their garages. So when that happens, we allow parking on the street as we did with other areas in the community here that they've been doing, uh, street repairs. So whenever that happens, we relax our parking restrictions, let people park on the street. And that's what was occurring at Talbot's Mill.
Now Steve Robert pointed to about relaxing when people have worked on. As you know, in Elk Grove, we are doing a very aggressive road reconstruction program in Elk Grove. Anyone that's bound to Elk Grove knows that. If you've been on a street that's been reconstructed, you know it's a lot of work, a lot of time. They're doing curves, they're doing sidewalks, they're doing the street. And that can take several weeks. Now, I know people have been frustrated because they say, hey, you know, we haven't, you know, they didn't tell us, we couldn't get out of our driveway right away today, and stuff like that. Our communication, we'll take responsibility, but with the contractor and the neighbors on the street have not been the best. They have not been the best. We're doing an awful lot of work, more work than we've ever done, and this is the village each year now, roads. We are going to have a meeting in about a week and a half, and we are going to reevaluate how we notify the people on the street. Real quick example, they go up to house, the house is on, say, My Street Smith, we can say, okay, starting Tuesday through Thursday, we're going to be doing the work. Don't park in your driveway, park on the streets around because you won't have access, because they'll be doing it. Well, if Tuesday morning you wake up and there's two inches of rain coming down, that pushes everything off, the contractor. Now, does that mean the contractor comes one day later? Maybe not, because he may have a job somewhere else on Friday, so we may punt it till Monday. So it's hard sometimes communicating that back and forth. So we're going to strategize a better way to notify people, to let them know what's going on than what we did this year. So be patient with us, just like what happened in Talbot's because what's going on, we're trying to do it. We're not used to doing this much work that often. And this work is far more intense than any road work, curb work, sidewalk work we've ever done. But we've made a commitment to aggressively fix, keep these things going good. So like that at Talbot's Mill, on any street in Elk Grove, we're going to be reevaluating how we get the word out and keep people informed on that stuff. Okay. Question eight?
Yes, thank you. A question came to us asking if something could be done about retail outlets that close their place of business and then leave the building sites just as they are and creating an ice ore. For example, the Burger King on Tui, the McDonald's on Beasterfield. Is there anything that we can do to create a green space or get rid of the building? Staff has responded that there are times when buildings are leased and businesses simply go out of business and cannot afford to restore the site or demolish the building. While the village does work with the owner of the property to make sure the property is being maintained, we are unable to require them to demolish the building or green grass the site. So it's not in our hands to be able to demand that they do that, and they probably just can't afford to do it. But I'd also like to know, we were talking about development and open space, trying to fill spaces. We do have an employee on staff whose sole position, her job is to create business development and find spaces and get those spaces, those retail spaces filled. So she works very hard at that, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Chris. Number nine.
Question nine has to do with Channel 6 cable TV. Why is the audio quality on EGTV so bad? And you have to turn the volume way down to be able to stand it. So we are aware of audio issues. It has come to our attention, and the EGTV staff is looking into the matter. The audio that is sent to the cable companies is monitored by EGTV. So the issue may be occurring on the cable company's side. Our EGTV staff has reached out to the individual who has submitted this question. If anyone else is experiencing these issues with audio, please report them to Channel 6 so that we can look into it more.
Thank you. Question 10?
I have that one.
Tammy?
This person asked, will there ever be a way to turn left onto Tani when approaching it from the east on Land Meyer? So if you're at the post office and you're heading from the east on Land Meyer, there, actually it should be west, if they're heading, going west. Currently, there is a left turn lane if you're coming from the post office. There's a left turn arrow to make a left onto Tani, driving westbound. But Tani, as you know, is a, is a divided local road with a large median. And so there is a sign there that might be confusing, where they, we do not want motorists to accidentally turn into the northbound lane, but actually to the southbound lane.
Okay. Question 11.
Yes, a resident questioned the humanity, whether it's humane to keep the elk at the corner of Arlington Heights and Higgins Road. I know they've been there since Elk Grove Village has been around, but this person feels that it's inhumane to have them there in such a small area, and was wondering if they could be relocated. And we really, the village has no jurisdiction related to the elk pasture at the Arlington Heights and Higgins Road intersection. The elk herd and pasture is managed by the forest preserve district of Cook County. So we've notified the resident, and we notify anyone else that is concerned. If you have a problem, please contact the forest preserve district of any concerns or inquiries regarding the elk. Thank you.
Okay. Question 12.
That's me. A resident has asked if it would be possible to reinstall the old Rose Garden sign that was from the shop in Park to the new facility over there on Higgins Road. We went to Rose Garden and asked them if that's what they wanted because they approved a new sign when we were talking about changing things up and moving them over there. And they had said that they are very happy with the sign they have now. So we are going to leave it at that. They, if they had an issue, they would have said, they said they would have brought it up, but I've had people ask me if we could still have the old park and shop sign put back on the corner. So I know people liked the way it was, but Rose Garden's very happy with the sign they have now, so we're going to leave it as it is.
And if I could just add to that, I think the primary concern is the height of the sign and people finding Rose Garden. I think initially I too, you know, struggled at first to find the new Rose Garden. And boy, at night, when you drive past there, I drove past there the other night, it glows. I mean, you can, you can find it. And I think, you know, initially, as people's traffic patterns change, it's getting used to something new. And, you know, I, I think the Rose Garden, just like you said, Jeff, is happy with, with the sign they chose. They went through great efforts and, and we're happy that they're open and their food is great. Continue to go there. They need Elk Grove.
Could I just add that the sign that they have there is what is called a monument sign, and that's following new village codes and guidelines. So this is the type of sign that we're requiring most businesses to use in the community.
Just to follow up on, Rose Garden's happy with their sign. We're going to leave it as it is.
You answered that well Jeff.
Thank you, half hour ago.
Okay, next question. What will the village do if the city-state tries to send more illegals into Elk Grove? How can the village stop this from happening? As everyone knows, last fall, I think it was September, Mayor Lightfoot sent some visitors to Elk Grove. We had them at the La Quinta Hotel and all that. Did we have some issues? Yes, there were some issues. But they're gone now. And again, we've not been requested by either the state or the federal government to have any other people come to Elk Grove, and right now, we don't see that happening. And so, right now, nothing's going on, so there's nothing for us to do on that. Next question was, oh, why are data centers now being built outside the business park in residential areas? Well, they're not being built in residential areas except one, maybe will be coming, and that's by Rollin' Road. They brought up Repolo subdivision. Repolo subdivision was a residential area in the heart of the nation's largest business park. So it was built long ago when the business park was just first starting, so almost grew up together, coincident that. The one they're talking about on Rollin' Road happened this way. The WGN property on Rollin' Road was not in any village. It was not in Elk Grove, it was not in Schaumburg. It was unincorporated Cook County. About three years ago maybe, two years ago? Two and a half years ago, we got word that WGN wanted to sell some of the property. They saw what I, the WBDM property at the Vaughn and Rollin' Road, right across from Belvidere, that they sold that land, got a lot of money for it, and they put in a truck terminal there. Well, WGN was looking to put a truck terminal in at Rollin' Road, 800 trucks a day. Obviously, we thought that was not conducive to the neighborhood feel, to the residents that backed up to that for 60 years. And so we stepped up to get involved. We walked a very fine line on that one, because remember, they were unincorporated. That means they weren't required to come to Elk Grove. They could have worked with the county or worked with Schaumburg. We worked with WGN, they were great partners working with them. And we understood the desire to develop the property in a way that was beneficial to them. Landowners, you don't blame them. But we wanted to work with the property that would not be detrimental to the residents that have lived there forever. So we did something unusual. You don't see it very often in government. We involved the neighbors that backed up to that property from day one. We invited all the neighbors that backed up to the property and across the street from those property owners to a meeting at the Belvidere to let them know what WGN was looking to do. We said we can work with WGN to develop and to provide the most un, how would I say this right? Pretty surprised they would be very good neighbors, that's a good way to put it, to all the homeowners. It was not going to be houses. Why? They get about $3, $4 a foot for houses, this kind of development, they get $40 and $50 a foot. Why? They get about $3, $4 a foot for houses. This kind of development, they get $40 and $50 a foot. You're talking millions of dollars difference. They were not gonna build homes there. So to the government's credit, they'd worked with us and said, well, Mayor, what would be conducive, that's the word, conducive to the residents? We said, hey, probably the most innocuous use you can build today is a data center. One, almost no employees, no truck traffic, no visualization. In other words, bright lights or anything to affect you. In other words, they're great neighbors. So we worked with them on that. We had the homeowners all involved. At the beginning of the meeting, when they saw across the street what went on task on WBDM property with all the trucks, and now they saw nice, quiet, quality neighbors next to them, they actually gave us an ovation when the meeting was over. They were happy. They were thanking us. And we did some things with it, too. One, there's been drainage issues by those homes for 60 years. Why? Radio towers wanna be in wetlands. It helps with conductivity and their transmission. The wetter the ground, the better for them. So that's swampland back there. They wanted that. Well, the problem with swampland, when you back your house to it, is it's not always good neighbors for your house. So we've got WGN fixing all drainage issues all the way around that area. And those homeowners can't be more thankful because of the swampland being mitigated away from it, working on drainage issues, tiles, flow. They're gonna have a quality life they've never had all those years there. And it ought to be done because the swampland's getting remediated. Secondly, the buffering, the landscaping, the trees, the fencing, the berms, everything in building, they won't even see the buildings. They're gonna make great neighbors for them. 200 and some feet away, it worked out beautiful. So that would be the one residential area where something like this is going. And it's going because truck, 800 trucks a day, data center. Trucks, data center. It was a no-brainer. And to this day, the residents, and we've given updates all the time, give them information all the time, the residents still thank us. Says, Mayor, thank you. They all knew someday something's going there. Most of you probably don't realize this. Chicago Cubs was looking to put a ball field there at one time. That's where Wrigley Field Suburban was gonna be built one time. So, right?
They were gonna build a replica of Wrigley Field there.
Cubs are gonna play there. That's what Mayor Zennick said, over my body.
Yes.
The bump in the road. So that's what's going on there. We don't build data centers in residential areas. They're part of a business park. And that's where they belong. And we continue to do that work on. Okay, that concludes that question. Who had the next question?
Steve.
Steve?
I do.
Yep.
This question came in about JC Park. A resident lives over by JC Park and we're talking about the bank of Salt Creek. They said it used to look real nice behind JC Park. But over the years, some groundwork was done there to stop the erosion of Salt Creek. And because of that, brush has grown and now there's like raccoons and skunks back there. And he wants to know what can be done, if they can be cleared out. Well, this property is managed by the park district. So this information is gonna be forwarded to the park district. We'll then go out and take a look at it and take the appropriate action.
Last question. Someone said, what happened? Why did the village file a lawsuit last week against the FAA? Federal Aviation Administration. And that was because, as we know, the airport expansion's going on. We were unsuccessful in stopping it, but we were successful in stopping from coming into our village. That was a good thing. We can't control the flights during the day. I know people live along Beaster Field and see flights like they never had before. That's when they built the Northern Runway. Nothing we can do about it. Where we have some say, not a lot, but some say, is overnight, the nighttime flight. And they call it the nighttime flight rotation. In other words, the FAA, through the ONCC, which is O'Hare Norris Compatibility Commission, and Chicago Department of Aviation, have been working to find a way to rotate the noise of the airport fairly around the whole airport. In other words, we all get the benefit of O'Hare. We all get the detriment. But we feel it should be equal benefit, equal detriment. So since 2015, Maggie, about eight years, this has been going on. And we want the FAA just to follow the law. It's called NEPA law. It's environmental law. And all we have to do is follow law. And what that law says very clearly is, look at all reasonable alternative plans for runway rotation at night. The federal law says the FAA has to do that. Well, we submitted plans through Suburban Air Commission. The question asked, what SOC? Suburban Air Commission's been on since 1980s. It was a plan that the suburban towns around the airport could work with O'Hare to try to make any work changes fair for the impact on the communities. It's been going on still to this day. I'm still the chairman of it. And we've worked very hard through SOC with our neighboring towns, Wooddale, Itasca, Bensonville, Addison, Elk Grove Township, DuPage County, Shiller Park, Rozelle. No, they're not part anymore. So we were working with them, Wooddale, to get a rotation. Well, this is one of the reasons. People say, well, Mayor, why is Elk Grove part of ONCC? O'Hare Norris Compatibility Commission? Because I said, they are not doing the bidding on our behalf. They're doing the bidding on behalf of Chicago. They set the agenda. They pay for everything. They set the people who run the chairs of the committees. It's amazing how none of the towns that are impacted, Bensonville, Itasca, Wooddale, chairs a committee. You've got towns as far away from there from like Niles, Schaumburg, they get chairs. They're not impacted like we are. But it's games being played. So we've always avoided that part, but we're still part of it through SOC. And we submitted a plan through our experts, JDA. JDA Aviation is the premier aviation experts in the world. Dr. Tranny, who's a high, a top logistic expert, works for the FAA about half the time. He lays out airports. He lays out flight quiets. He does, for the FAA. He works for them. Well, Dr. works for JDA, so he laid out our alternative. So we submitted an alternative called H. Alternative B was put forward by, especially by our towns of Elmhurst and Park Ridge. Why is that? Real quick, I don't go on too long. Real quick. Their alternative being H cuts the flights over Elmhurst and Park Ridge to about a fourth of what they would get on a fair rotation. Our rotation, we're gonna get more to the east and west because that's the longest runway. Bigger freight planes at night use them. But they can put more on the diagonals, which go over Park Ridge and Elmhurst. They can put more there with the smaller flights during the night. They don't want it. So again, unfortunately, it's given play. And they only submitted alternative B, which one Elmhurst and Park Ridge pushed very hard to get through. They didn't put ours through. And we said, that's not right. So since August, or no, since July, we were writing letters to the FAA, calling the FAA, reaching out to the FAA and Chicago, and ONCC, all of them, saying, put ours forward. Let them look at both. You have to by law. They refused. So that's why we filed a lawsuit. Can't say too much right now, but I think in the very near future, we'll be getting some news that we'll be sharing with the public. And you can tell from my face, I'm not unhappy. So we'll be getting that out, and that's what's going on with that. We want some peace and quiet at night. Again, we only want what's fair. Everyone gets benefit. Everyone has detriment. So that's going on with that. So that concludes our questions that were sent in. So this time, we answered all the questions that were submitted in advance, quite a few, actually, which is good. Now it's open to your questions you may have. All we have to do is take turns politely coming down and asking you questions. I see Gary back there. Gary and I have known each other since high school. Are you here about the traffic on your road? You're getting a letter. It was signed off today. You're getting a day or so. Have you seen our police out there? Have you seen the monitors? I'm sending you all the information on it. Okay? We didn't forget about you. But they wanna check at different times, different areas. They've had unmarked cars. They've had show line. Gary came to one of our coffees. Like I said, I've known Gary since I was in high school. We worked together at the park district. And so he wanted to know, a lot of cut-through traffic going down his street, trying to avoid the light at Beaster Field and Raleigh. And so we've done analysis. Our police go out and they do actual counts with police enforcement. They do unmarked cars observation. They put electronics both on and off to get the numbers. And we got all the report back and just sent off. So when I saw Gary, I hope I didn't take a night tonight on that. Okay, who would like to be the first one to come on up? Come on up, ma'am.
Hi, Chris. Hi, my name is Robin Olson, 37, 38-year-old resident of Elk Grove. First time I've come here. Interesting.
You're welcome.
I wanna follow up with, I had the question about Sears.
Yeah.
I'm still a little confused. When you say governance, how long does that governance? How long does Jewel have that governance? Like forever?
Yes. What happened was this. Jewel's property was developed first. Then George, I don't wanna say his last name, the developer, got second. One of the things that Jewel's property owners did was they put on a non-compete, a governance, whatever, thing over that piece of land. What happens is the owner of that piece of land, in order to go ahead and develop it and all that, he kinda has to go along with that agreement. So they, he agreed to it. So it's not like that property owner didn't know about. They know that governance exists. And that governance is very difficult at times. Again, I can see Jewel's point of view. I don't think it's right. But as a business, private business owner, they worry about their own profits. They don't want a liquor store there. So that was shot down. They don't want a competing fresh fruit and market. That was shot down. Give you example, they got weird things. They want that video gaming going in their strip shopping center. It's okay to have two locations on the other one, but they don't want on their property. So they have that control. So that's why, you know, it's difficult for the owner of the shopping center. Trust me, the owner of the shopping center wants to fill it. He don't want vacant space either. You know, he wants to make money, too.
So you have governance over that whole strip center?
Yep.
Okay.
And that, that happens. Unfortunately, that does happen sometimes. Now, we've learned-
We're going back to 2007.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I'm beginning to wonder, do they ever want anything in there?
No, the owner, we know wants something. We know that. No one wants to own a strip shop that's got vacancies. Now, we learned lessons, though. Give you example. When we built, remember Jewel's built first. Remember where the town center is? Was the old Michaels and Jewel and all that. Well, we learned, now when we got involved on that, we have a lights-out clause, right, at that one? We have a lights-out clause. If something goes vacant for a certain length of time, we can waive governance and stuff like that. We can do stuff like that. That was in place when that development was done. That was before that. So we learned.
Do you hear of the property is still paying taxes on that property?
Yes.
Even though it's empty?
Now, maybe reduced because it's vacant property, but they still pay taxes on it.
Okay, so at any point, does the village have any ability to change that?
No.
To make an incentive?
No, you can't go retroactive back and change that. Trust me.
No, I'm not saying retroactive. I'm saying if he continues to get a cut on his taxes by having it empty, he doesn't have a real incentive.
Well, he does. Because the cut on taxes nowhere offsets the profit you make on filling up a shopping center. Because remember, the more a shopping center is filled up, the more the other vacant spots he has, has a chance to get filled up. So I don't think the owner would do that. The owner, I respect the owner. You know, he's trying to do his best. So I have nothing against the owner on that one. He'd like to fill it up, too. Now, we've heard of some potentials coming. We aren't liberty to say if it's gonna happen or not. But again, they gotta get okayed by next door. And so I know that's in the works. All right, Mr. Knickerbocker?
Yeah.
Yep. So we know there might be something in the works to come there.
Okay.
Again, we're all frustrated. We all like to see it filled. And-
It's, it's just, it's kind of an eyesore, you know?
But remember this-
A waste of really valuable space.
Prime real estate. Yeah. But remember this. This is private property, folks. Last thing you want is government saying too much about what people do on the private property and all that. Also, remember this. We're doing at the shopping center up at Higgins Arlington Heights Road. We've said this a million times. The old strip shopping centers are dinosaurs. They're slowly dying away. And you're gonna see more and more of this happen over time. And some do get filled up, luckily, but a lot are not. And we're not alone. I talk to mayors every day, Schaumburg, Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, this, but we all have the same problem. But our hope is something's coming soon. And as Mr. Knickerbocker said, our village attorney, there's something in the works. If it does happen, I think people will be very happy.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thanks for coming on, Robin. Okay.
Next. Who would like to ask next? Sure, come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name is William Jaworski. Mayor, you're coming through loud and clear over the speakers, but we can't hardly hear anybody else.
Okay, well, move the microphones up. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Jewel's had a stranglehold on this village ever since they came in. The, you say there was an agreement when they built the new shopping center where it's at now. But how did that Italian-named supermarket, I can't remember their name now. They didn't last for-
Dominix? Dominix? Oh, Caputos? Okay.
How did they get in there, although they didn't last very long?
Well, they don't have a covenant across the street. They have the covenant where they're located. So they got their shopping center and they got the shopping center next to them where Sears used to be. The covenant oversees those properties, not across the street at the town center where Caputos was. They have no covenant over there. We actually have rules in there about lights-out clauses, but they have no covenant over there. Their covenant is to block like Sears hardware and that kind of stuff, not on this side.
All right, but still, you would think if you have a legal department, you're losing, that they're interfering with pre-trade. There is a loss of sales revenue. Now, is this gonna go on forever and ever?
As far as we know, it goes-
Well, you know, Mayor, we've got a legal department trying-
We can't, sir, we can't sue them on that. There's no precedent for that. We can't step on a private property owner.
Every agreement can be broken, can be renegotiated. Every civil agreement. There isn't anything that's chiseled and granted. It can be done, but somebody's gotta go to work and gotta do it. Somebody's gotta put the pressure on them. Now Jewel is, I mean, that place is a goldmine. It's absolute goldmine. And I fail to see how, you know, they can run this village to the point of restricting who could come in and who can't. Now, another idea is, how about breaking that large, single structure into smaller units?
The old Sears into smaller units? That's up to the owner if he wants to do that. That's his choice. He's obviously trying to get a bigger tenant in there, but it's a good idea.
He's content with the way it is, just sitting empty?
I guess.
We, again, sir, we-
Well, I mean, sir, haven't you had any conversation with him?
I've talked to him. We've talked over the years. And he's frustrated, too. He's not alone. We're not, we're not the only frustrated. We all know that. We're all very frustrated. But I gotta make sure people understand. There's certain rules. You can't-
The owner has his attorney. If anyone has standing to go against Jewel, it's the owner and his very capable of attorney. And he is trying many ways to try to break the covenants or get Jewel to accept a breaking of the covenants in a negotiated way. And it's being done daily in these conversations. That attorney and that property owner have more standing than the village. They're the ones that are being affected. We may be indirectly affected by sales tax, as you mentioned, but they are the ones that need to have the covenant modified, broken, or brought to court. And they're working on it. But it's, and they're the ones that have the standing to do that.
Well, see, maybe the village could help them somehow put pressure.
We would help, but we can't.
I mean, Jewel isn't gonna lose anything.
Jewel, I'm not arguing with you. Sir, no one's as frustrated. We're all just as frustrated as you are. And we've talked. I've talked to the president, Jewel. Their office is right there in Itasca, their headquarters. We've talked to him. The bottom line is, they know what's standing there's standing. There's solid ground legally. They know it. And trust me, the owner, their building attorney, if they could do it, they would have done it years ago. They would have done it years ago. Because he's losing money, too. It's not like he's making money off it. He's losing money. You can't have vacant buildings and make money. So we're trying. Everyone's frustrated. I agree with you, sir. That, you know, that's why we learned lessons. That's why when we got this shopping center across the town center, we put those covenants in there, the lights-out clause and all that. We put in safeguards so that can't happen.
How's the construction coming along on that, up there at Arlington and 72?
And Higgins?
What's, what's the timeframe as far as starting building something?
The goal would be this spring. We have to do what's called redevelopment agreement. In other words, and we're pretty much done? Yep. The redevelopment agreement's gonna be coming to the board either the 24th of November, or November? November, we'll vote on it. Once the development's done, they can start working. So as I can tell you, they're buying the land. So every penny we paid for it, 17.5 million, they're paying us 17.5 million for the land. So we're getting paid back. So we're getting paid back. And then hopefully the development starts in '24. He's hoping, what, end of '25, early '26 completion? No, just the shopping. Yeah, beginning, so about a year and a half, the first shopping center, the shopping center done, then they'll start the housing component. So we're-
Are there any artists or architects renderings?
Oh, yeah. We showed them, we had a public hearing.
Well, I missed that one, sorry.
Okay. We can get your copies. If you, if you want to give us your email-
What it's gonna look like?
Oh, yeah. We got them all done. And that matter of fact, our hope is in the next month or so, we'll have the rendering for the last component, which is the bridge across Arlington Road to the woods. We're almost done with that final rendering. So all the renderings will be done at that point, the shopping center, the housing, and the bridge going across.
Not a car bridge?
No, a pedestrian bridge.
Another bridge from the shopping center to this?
Right, be by the apartments, going Arlington Road into the woods. Yep. Why?
Yeah.
Bussy Woods, believe it or not, Bussy Woods has more visitors every year than Yellowstone Park. I cannot tell you the number of people that go from that side of Arlington Road to the woods daily. The bad part is, you would think they'd go down to Oakton with the stoplight or Higgins with the light. People like the shortest distance, which is straight across. We noticed that during COVID. People just go straight across. So for safety reasons, convenience, nicely for families with kids, all that, we're gonna be putting a bridge going across Arlington Road to have people safely go on the other side. So that's gonna be happening.
I don't mean to monopolize things, I just wanted to ask-
No, you're fine. You're fine.
The migrants.
The what?
The migrants that are coming up from Mexico and Central America. Does the village have any plans, anything? And you're thinking about it, if Chicago starts busing them out here like they did?
Nothing I'm gonna discuss tonight.
Beg your pardon?
I'm not gonna discuss it.
Why not?
Does a, does a football coach show the other team his plays before they play?
Come on, Mayor. This is a public forum. This is a public forum. We have a right to know what you got up your sleeve.
No, no.
Wouldn't be up your sleeve anymore.
We don't?
You'll, you'll go.
Nope.
You running for office again?
No, no, no.
All right.
We've been, sir, we've been very successful in what we do.
I, I, I trust you've got the village's best intentions. But Chicago is really getting backed up with a, and I think for every immigrant that we take and feed and clothe and house, the word gets back, because if you notice when you watch the news, they've all got cell phones. The word is getting back and we're gonna have a lot more visitors coming north.
We'll make sure we protect this village. Don't worry.
And thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
Next. What? No one? Oh, come on up, sir.
I'm somewhat embarrassed. I served on the plan commission for 10 years, about 45, 50 years ago during the Devon 53 hearings. And the village has been going so well that I haven't seen any need to come back and visit it, but I am here today. I understand that every decision has arguments on both sides, but why did the village board pass a new 14-page signage ordinance that is being interpreted as preventing new retail businesses from erecting easily visible signs on Higgins Road when there are many such signs already there?
We, a number of years ago, we talked about the proliferation of large signs along Elk Grove. In other words, we got 5,600 businesses in Elk Grove Village. 5,600 businesses in Elk Grove. We're the largest business park in North America. We thought, we don't want to look like another Las Vegas. Hence why you don't see a bunch of electronic signs up and down our streets. Hence why you don't see as many tall above signs. So we started encouraging and requiring what they call monument signs. Instead of being on high poles, they're on the ground. And we've been doing that for a number of years. Most new developments have it. Now, if you have a development that's got multiple tenants, we're flexible and we allow higher signs, because physically put one on the ground with tenants' names on there wouldn't work. It's physically impossible. But those, we have leeway from higher signs. But for individual businesses and stuff like that, we put in monument signs. And they've been going very well. We've had no problems with them. Most, I haven't had, I haven't had complaint from business since we started doing that, including Rose Garden, what we talked about tonight. Rose Garden, Alex and Chris, very happy with the sign. They love it. No problem.
To focus the last question a bit, why do I easily see a prominent cannabis sign when I drive east from my lab on Higgins Road toward my favorite restaurant, but I can't see the restaurant sign if a van or a pickup is parked right next to the sign?
Now, what about-
And it is, it is not just because I am old. Many of my much younger friends have said that they can't see this small sign either and have trouble finding the restaurants. Last, how much thought was given to the concern that if someone has to be looking at the GPS map, at their GPS map, to find the direct, to avoid driving past the hidden sign, might they not be driving less safely, especially if a sudden change in traffic occurs at the same time? Was that concern given careful consideration?
Always. Safety is always first paramount. First thing is, Chris and Alex tell you, they have never done business, better business than they do now at New Restaurant.
It's wonderful.
They're going gangbusters. So obviously, people are finding it. So in other words, they know where it's at. They're getting there. They're doing great. Secondly, what, and I'm not one with that, but what most people do is, they don't look at GPS anymore. They listen to them tell them, turn left here, 500 feet, turn right at the light. So most people, when they use a navigation system, it talks to them. Because you're right, they shouldn't be looking at a screen. They should be focused on the road. So, but all I'll tell you is, Chris and Alex are very happy. Their business has never done better. So that sign did not hurt them one bit, not one bit. They have no problems at all. We've talked to them. They're fine.
I must add that I'm delighted with the beautiful Elk Grove Technology Park and its elegant 38-foot-high sign. I have brought some pictures that I will leave back there that illustrate the reason for my concern about the safety and just what it is when you're driving there. It is very difficult. And, and I have taken a U-turn on Higgins because I couldn't find it. Before anyone asks how much I, how I had to spend the time to spend all on this, the other engineers that I have are working on new product and I can do nothing but slow them down. So I had plenty of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Another question? Yes, ma'am.
I live, my name's Jerry Sanford. I've been here for 46 years. Wouldn't think of moving anywhere else. We live off of Tunny. And I have been noticing cars parking on their grass next to the driveway, blocking the parkway on the parkway grass. And there was one person in particular, but now it's spreading. I'm seeing others. So I'm wondering if you could put something in the newsletter perhaps about that this is not a good idea, because it makes the neighborhood look bad.
What street are you on?
Hartford.
Hartford? First off, I know the police starting tomorrow will be checking Hartford for that. Secondly, Caroline, Caroline, we'll make sure in the next newsletter, we'll be putting something in there. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank. Now, there might be a newsletter going out. Have you approved that one already?
Yeah, October should be hitting home soon.
So October hit, so it'll be your November one, ma'am? Okay, thank you. And we're sorry that they're doing that. We'll make sure they stop. Question? Oh, come on up, sir, please.
My name's Bradley Grimes. Just had, wanted to get everyone's thoughts up here about the Elk Grove Junior High and the violence going on there. I'm sure I don't have to brief you about what's going on there, but the violence, the weapons, the lockdowns, the numerous lockdowns, not just one. It seems to be a pretty frequent thing. I mean, as someone with young kids in the area, and I know I'm not the only one with young kids in the area that would be attending that school, it's definitely a concern for the future for me and, you know, wanting to stay in Elk Grove. I know they had a district board meeting, or district meeting about it with the superintendent. They give canned responses and nothing really insightful. So I wanted to get everyone's opinion up here of what was going on with that.
Well, first off, something is happening. If anyone saw the last school board meeting, as a former teacher, which I am, and my two daughters are teachers, teachings in my family, it turned my stomach when I saw that young girl had to get up with four of her friends to give her strength and talk to her about how scared she was to go to Grove Junior High School.
It's not right.
That's right.
The first thing, the first thing, the question up here the first of the night, you said, safety is the primary concern of all the residents, so.
And I went to Grove Junior High. A long time ago. You weren't even have thought of yet. That will not happen in this village. That's why, two weeks ago yesterday, we had police presence at each store and squad cars at the junior high school. That's after seeing some fights, have videos of fights, after the knife fish situation and all that. And our goal has been, and we've been talking since May, meeting in July, about getting an SOR officer at the school, student resource officer. And we were getting a little frustrated. So after that Monday, the school board agreed to bring up the issue. They voted unanimously that night. They put together an agreement, SOR. Mr. Knickerbocker just finished the SOR agreement with the school district. Monday, coming up, the 23rd, 59 is gonna vote to put in SOR in Grove Junior High. We will vote on the 24th to put the officer in there. And on the 30th, a week from this coming Monday, there will be an SOR officer for the first time ever at Grove Junior High School. That is happening. Yes, it'll give us a good feel of what's going on. Yes, we'll better understand what may need be done. And more importantly, yes, it should make a safer school for everyone that attends that school. But again, we're staying on top of it. We've been on top of it. Trusty Schmidt and I talked about it at length last April and March, and that's why we stepped up. So you're right, what we've seen happening, and my son is on the 59 board, it said it turned his stomach when he saw that young girl get up, that's not gonna happen again. And we will do whatever we have to as a board to protect the health, safety, welfare of everybody that's in Elk Grove Village. So that will continue to have happened. So we're on top of it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for coming. And don't worry, your kids will be fine. Next. Any question? Sure. Sure is high school. We talked before.
Good evening, everyone. To piggyback off of what he said, I thank you for working with the board for approving the SROs. So I thank you for that very much, because eventually my son will be a junior middle, junior Grove middle schooler. Also, I have a question. Sadly, the kids in school now, these days, have to practice a lockdown. So my question to you, first responders, is, do the first responders do a practice drill as far as, how long does it take for a first responders to actually make it to the school and start assessing the situation?
Before I let them answer the practice and getting ready, so everyone knows, that's one of the benefits of an SOR in a school. Because remember, an SOR has direct communication, radio communication directly with police officers. They don't have to go through 911, anything like that, through dispatch and all that. They've got it. So an SOR can get almost response like that. There's a car in the neighborhood, they get them, they're there. SOR also can slow down the situation for him. Give you an example. As trustee Schmidt, police chief Schmidt said when we had a meeting with the 59 people, he asked, a great question, goes, they go, we got cameras at every door, which is great. First thing Steve said was, how far does the camera show? He said, five, 10 feet? Goes five, 10 feet. Steve said, it's too late. Once the guy gets that door with a gun, he's in, too late. Most of the damage done in the first two and a half minutes. But if that camera shows out to the parking lot, they can see someone walking up from 100, 200 feet away. Now, the SOR gets notified instantly. He's getting help. He's going there to act as a deterrent. That can slow it down enough times that the officers can get there in time to stop the situation, neutralize it before they even get in the building. Little stuff like that makes all the difference in the world for safety. And that's why we're working with 59 to do other things besides the SOR, other things too. And we're gonna work with MEED and other schools throughout the district. MEED already has an SOR, so does the high school. So we are working on that stuff all the time, because unfortunately, that's the real world. You know, I don't have kids, my kids are older. I got grandkids I worry about. You've got kids you gotta worry about. There's people don't have any kids, but they all still worry about anything happening on that. As far as training goes, what you do with the schools and all that.
Yes, ma'am. We do, we do train with the schools, but to directly answer your question about how long it would take for a police officer to get to the school, there's many variables that would make up that equation. First off, we have to be notified that incident is happening. As the mayor said, if we have a school resource officer on duty in the school, the radio contact is immediate. Officers will start moving in that direction right away. The closer the officers on the street are to the school, the sooner the response time would be. So we can't guarantee that there's always a police officer right there in that portion of the neighborhood, because they could be on other assignments and other places taking care of other incidents. So we do make it a practice, especially if we get a call for urgent assistance from a school resource officer. Ample resources would be deployed from our police department as well as mutual aid police departments as well if the situation warranted that. We also do have training with regards to handling incidents that take place in a school like that if we have an active incident of some sort. So our folks just trained on that a couple of weeks ago, actually not at the schools in particular. We use, oftentimes we use abandoned buildings for that, or the training facility on Fargo at the fire department to practice those type of maneuvers and deployments. But we absolutely train on it. It is a very high priority for the village. The safety of the children, number one.
And do you meet with the principals?
We do.
Of the schools?
Yes. At the beginning of the school year, we host a, a meeting here at village hall for the principals from the, the schools in the area where the police department meets with them. Our crime prevention officers, our, our, our school resource officers, the juvenile officers, all work together with the principals. We have a very good working relationship on how we can access information from the schools and how we can get floor plans for the schools and exchange information back and forth. It is a, a very high priority for us.
And we're one of the few towns, we still do DARE. We still do DARE. A lot of towns, a lot of my fellow mayors, during the tough economic times, got rid of DARE. We said, we're not getting rid of DARE. We want programs like that. We want interaction like that. The kids get to see the officers in a different light. Not always, most people think a policeman, ah, he's gonna give me a ticket. Ah, he's gonna get me for something. No, no. Officers also very positive enforcement, and we encourage that. Real quick story. I had a woman one time very mad at me. She wanted me to fire one of our police officers. And I said, why, ma'am? She goes, well, he's doing something wrong. He shouldn't be doing it. You gotta fire him right away. I said, what's he doing? He's playing basketball with a couple of kids at Bertram Park. I said, what? She goes, he's playing basketball in Bertram Park. He's not patrolling. I said, did you get the officer's star number? She goes, well, no. Why? Can't you figure out? I said, yeah, I wanna give him a combination. I like that. I want the positive interaction. That's why an SOR, they go, they're great. That's a positive interaction with kids. That's why DARE, that's a positive interaction. My kids to this day, they're in their 30s, they still know who Officer Friendly is. They remember Officer Friendly 25 years ago when they're in grade school.
Mayor, would you like to explain what the DARE program is?
DARE program is when an officer goes to sixth-grade students. So on this side of the village, it's Grove Junior High. West side, it's the grade schools. They go through six over there, seventh, eighth is middle school. And they teach about, not just drugs, they teach about alcohol, they teach about smoking, they teach about cyberbullying. They teach about all the stuff that's going on today. And it's a positive interaction back and forth with the young people. And that's a great connection. And you know what you should see? We go to DARE graduation. We all go to them. How many officers, the kids come up and give them a hugs at the end of the thing? They give them hugs. Now, isn't that a great rapport for the future? The young kids are hugging policemen, thanking them, instead of spitting on them and cussing at them. In Elk Grove, we do things right. In Elk Grove, we do things the way everyone should do it. And that's the positive interaction we have. I am so proud of these men and women in blue. We always say, 1,000% here in Elk Grove. Thank you. Yes, for them. here in Elk Grove." Thank you. Yes, for them. Now, I'll tell you this, something goes wrong, who's the first one you call? Them. So we understand that. They know it. We appreciate it. We take good care of our people. Okay? Now, any other question? Next question? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Vicki Martin. I live over behind the Kmart. No, the, the Home Depot.
Now, you dated yourself. You dated yourself.
Forty years, yes, the Kmart. Where did that come from? Uh, first of all, just FYI, my daughter, our daughter, is Facebook friends with her DARE officer from sixth grade. That's, this is, yeah. Yeah, very cool. Anyways, um, it occurred to me that I haven't heard anything, which doesn't mean it's not happening, but I'd like to hear what the village has in mind going forward for, um, additional affordable housing for seniors and also for, you know, we're going to have this influx of all these people at all these data centers and all these other things, you know? It would be nice for people to be able to afford to live where they work. So.
Um, first off, uh, I understand this. I know people talk about data centers. Elk Grove Village is almost, almost 65 million square feet of business park. Think about that. 65 million, almost. Most towns, if they have a business park with five to eight million square feet, that's considered huge. We got almost 10 times that much. Now, data centers, when all said and done, right now, we have 15 or 16. 15. There's 21 in the pipeline looking to come to Elk Grove. They go, "Oh, my God. A whole business park's going to be data centers." Our business park will make up, when all, if all 21 come, which would be unbelievable, it would make up maybe 13% of the business park, 15 tops, maybe 15%. So 85% is not that. So our business park is very diverse, a lot of different uses. At one time, you realize Elk Grove was the capital of tool and die makers and printers? They probably make up a big, at that time, bigger percentage than 15%. We're the king of that at one time in this country. So it goes through phases. So even though we talk about them a lot, they're not running over the whole thing. We are still the second largest manufacturing base in the state of Illinois after Chicago. Bigger than Rockford, bigger than all, we're still there. So we have tons of manufacturers. Their new technology park over on Higgins, half the buildings are high-tech manufacturers from Spain, Japan, um, Germany, you name it. They're all over. So we're a lot mixed. Now, why do we like data centers? We'll tell you why. One, they build beautiful-looking buildings. They landscape, they windows, architectural features. They do that because we push them to do that. It's a new use. We have controls over it. We push them for what we call aesthetic improvements. Trust me, they make a lot of this, a lot. They don't mind doing it. Secondly, they're low impact on the community. They don't have a lot of employees. It's not like they employ thousands of people. They employ a couple dozen. Now, a lot of people go there because they go and work on the equipment inside the building. But it's low impact on the community. Roads don't get beaten up. Very few trucks, very few, very few police and fire calls. None. The security of these places are beyond belief. The fire protection is beyond belief. So one, they don't wear on our services. Biggest thing is, they generate a ton of money for the community. I'm talking millions each location. They're great. The electric tax, the water tax, property tax. It's great for this community. It generates. Why do you think you're sitting right now in the town with the lowest property tax rate in our North Wisconsin county? All lower than our Arington Heights, Schaumburg, Hoffman Estates, Rolling Meadows, Disciplines, you name it, Mount Prospect, we're the lowest. But we offer the best services, bar none. Our police, Kalia certified every year. Fire department, rating of two, maybe better soon. Uh, Public Works may have news coming out. Engineering may have news coming out. We're the best. And the statistics and the rankings show it. We provide you the best. You deserve the best. We want to give you the best. Yet, like I say, the most cost-effective. So we like data centers. They're good, and we're great for them. They love Elk Grove. They pick Elk Grove over next door all the time. Raleigh, uh, Devon and Bussy. Remember those homes there in Bensonville? They tore them all down? What went in there? Trucking depots. Hundreds of trucks a day. A lot of them left Elk Grove. What goes in their spots? Well, Stern Manufacturing's taken one. Cunego went down there. We got Stern Manufacturing. 375 jobs. They're going to sell all the pinball machines right there in Elk Grove, consolidating all locations. Manufacturing come to Elk Grove. That's what we want. No offense against trucking, but there's minimal benefit of trucking and a lot of detriment. A lot of wear and tear on your roads, a lot of noise, a lot of pollution. So again, that's why that happens that way, and we're excited about that. So that's why when we talk about different businesses coming and what's going on, that's where it all comes from, is stuff like that. And what else did you ask?
Forget it.
Affordable housing. We do, people don't realize, we have affordable housing in Elk Grove for seniors. Village Grove Apartments have been there for decades. Affordable, Land Meyer Station, Land Meyer Station, affordable senior housing. Alexin Brothers, Alexin Village, affordable senior housing. We have affordable senior housing in Elk Grove. Um, so it's not like we don't have it. So we're on top of it. Now, we've had others propose, and we're welcome to them, at, uh, Nergie and Devon. We've been on Devon Avenue, you know where the creek is? That piece of land, um, on Devon, right next to the creek by Shinua and Temple. There's land there. One looked at there one time. So we're open to it. They just need to come here, you know? And like I say, we do have it now. It's not like we're lacking it. And we've looked at our numbers of senior population and all that. We fill the need pretty well. And, oh, Charleah, Charleah, Cypress, there's other locations.
But what about, what about for other people?
Cypress and Charleah are more for younger people. They're not senior affordable housing. Give you an example. Uh, you can get a two-bedroom, one-bath at Cypress Apartments for 1,200, $1,200 a month. Most towns, it's between 1,800 and 2,000 a month. So we do have it. It's mixed out there. It is out there. So we're very conscious of it. Elk Grove is not Barrington. No offense, I'm not saying it's not Barrington. We're not, you know, Inverness. You know, we're more middle-class type community. So we have some mixed in, low affordable housing. We have some nicer housing by the Cosman Lake area, areas like that. So we have a nice mix. And SynTech's did a good job doing that when they laid out the village. So we're on top of that. Yes. Thank you, though.
Mayor, can I just say one thing about the manufacturing? Uh, I'm on the business leaders forum along with trustee, uh, Miller and trustee Gerres. We visit businesses out there. It's amazing what's going on in this community. As an example, there's a company out here that builds the air conditioning units for the new Boeing planes. It comes out of Elk Grove Village. There's another company that's developing an arm, a robotic arm to assist doctors in very delicate surgeries. Um, and there, and there's just all kinds of things going on. Just as two examples. But you drive by these buildings, you don't know what's going on inside of them until you stop and see them. And that's one of the things we do. We visit the businesses in the community and say, "What can we do to help you to be successful?" So we are very proactive in working with our businesses in the community. But there's a lot of things that are going on. There's a lot of companies in town that have government contracts. They're doing things for the, for the federal government that can't be talked about, but there is a lot of stuff going on in our business park. You'd really be surprised besides the data centers.
And our vacancy rate is still less than 1%. Think about it. 65 million square feet, that's like 600,000 square feet available. That's nothing. And that's, like I say, when they go out, they come, every month, they do three, four places. It's amazing what gets done in Elk Grove. And you know, you drive by the building, you would never know it. You know? And I know people say, "Well, I see signs for lease or for sale." Well, if I'm a business owner and someone in today's market wants to pay me three times what my building's worth, hell, yeah, I'm going to sell it. I'll sell it to them tomorrow. You know what? He'll fill it up right away. So that happens a lot of times for lease. There's tenants in there now. They may move somewhere else. These come in. So that's what I'm saying. The village is doing well.
Oh, last, uh, gosh, I keep losing the speaker here. Last Thursday, I visited a company called Demji. And from the outside, it, it's, uh, north of Higgins, off of Lee Street. And, you know, you think, "Oh, it's just a building." I went inside, um, they were on, they were one of the stops on the Illinois manufacturing tour. Uh, this is manufacturing month. And last week, um, they were one of the spots featured. Senator Laura Murphy was there, Michelle Musman, uh, Kevin Morrison was there. And we got a tour inside. And they make, they're a, um, tool and die manufacturing company that, uh, does plastics. And, um, they showed a, a piece of, uh, medical equipment to remove polyps. And, and it's Boston Scientific right on the, the name there. So, um, just really to add to that, it's, it's exciting. They want to expand. Um, they want to stay here in Elk Grove. So really cool.
Polyps. They didn't give a demonstration, I hope.
They, I did not volunteer.
Other questions? Yes, sir. Come on down, please.
Good evening. My name's Dana Ruiz. I'm on Kendall Road. Been here 20 years. Same question I'm going to have for you as I asked before. What is the percentage of the business park that's under a TIF? 20%? 40%?
20%. 20, 25%.
So then with these apartment buildings that are going up in Arlington Heights, there's two proposals going up. One on Arlington Heights and Algaquin, and then one on Golf and Algaquin. And then with our apartment building going on Higgins, how much do you anticipate will be funneling into 59?
Well, with apartment buildings, housing, you have to pay per student. So we pay the cost, if any young people go to the apartment buildings, we have to pay 59 and 214 the cost of each student going to school. So cost to taxpayers, nothing for that student because we pay for it. The village.
The village pays for it.
Yep.
Okay. So then when do we start seeing the benefit in our taxes going down with all that business?
What you're seeing is...
Well, the businesses are locked into a certain tax bracket for 20 years, 23 years?
The property tax is locked in, yes.
So then when do we start seeing that benefit? Because you guys are seeing all the benefits from the TIFs right now as a whole, as a village hall.
The village sees the benefits, right.
Right. But the taxpayers, when do we start seeing some of those benefits?
When you see it, you're seeing it today.
When those TIFs start expiring?
You're seeing it today. You've got the lowest taxes of any town around us. That doesn't happen if we don't develop that business park. If that business park is not churning, if it's not homing like it is, your tax would be a lot higher. Just talk to people in Hoffman Estates, Rolling Meadows, Schaumburg. They're paying a lot more, a lot more than we pay because we are doing well like that. So you're getting the benefits as you talk to me right now.
I, I, I see all the benefits, and I'm quite grateful for the business park and the benefits that this business park offers us. But what I'm saying is, why can't we see more of it as a citizen?
You've got the best. You can't do any better than the best.
But are utility taxes are maxed out, aren't they?
A utility?
Our cables, our gas, our electric.
Not all of them, no. No, we have, we don't get the highest electric. We haven't done the highest gas. No. But again, our tax, we do achieve every year, should be coming soon, where we compare all utilities with every town around us. Water rates, electric tax, phone, or phone tax, cable tax. We do it all. And we're always, our bottom line, we're the best. When you add up all the costs living in town, we're the cheapest town to live in. When you take in everything. Garbage rates, electric tax, natural gas tax, phone tax, cable rates, uh, property tax, we're the lowest every year. We're still the lowest. So you are seeing the benefit of that. If we weren't being aggressive, go the other way. What we try to, and I understand what you're saying, and you're trying, and I respect that. No one doesn't like taxes more than we don't. That's why 14 of the last 15 years, we haven't raised property taxes. No town around us can say that. We haven't raised them in 14, 15 years. The only tax we can raise on property is for pensions, which is state-regulated, not us. They tell us what we do each year. So again, our property taxes are the lowest. Um, I'm jumping gun a little bit this year. General property tax this year, Christine, what are we looking at? Increase?
Uh, very slight, but I, we just got...
Is that pension or is that property?
Oh, definitely pension.
All pension again. We're not raising our general fund again. We haven't done that for years. And we do that to help offset costs for people. But again, you look at the benefit is that if you, we didn't do what we do, we end up like neighboring towns just south of us who did not keep up. There are business parks like us, not the size, but like us, that towns were slow to react, slow to reinvest, slow to make changes to keep them viable and on the cutting edge. I won't name towns. Bensonville, Franklin Park, Cicero, all those areas, Schiller Park, they were slow reacting. We weren't. We've been on the cutting edge from day one. All the data centers come to Elk Grove and they tell me why. I go, "Why don't you go to Wooddale? Why don't you go to Itasca? Why don't you go there?" They go, "Mayor, you've got everything you want. You've got all the fiber optic. You've got all the water." When Microsoft came to me, they said, "Mayor, we need a million and a half gallons a day on an 80-degree day to cool our machines. Can you provide it?" I said, "I can provide you 15 million gallons a day." He goes, "That's all we like hearing about, Jeff." We got location. We got updated infrastructure from water to sewer lines to everything everyone needs. We've got it. And that's why we've been working since the Industrial Commercial Realization Commission, all the rest. We've been doing this since 2000, staying on the cutting edge to be aggressive and attract. That's why everyone comes to Elk Grove. We're there. And by them coming to Elk Grove, it affords a stability to keep the taxes low. If they didn't come here, we'd be like those other towns, charging an awful lot. But we don't. So that's the benefit to you. Plus, that's just tax dollars. Plus, that corner, that bowling alley, the old Rose Garden, the old bank was seeing its better days. That was not the best image of Elk Grove when you drove in, stopped at Arlington Heights Road, at Higgins, and you looked over and saw that. That was not the best image of a town you want to see. They go down Higgins, everyone says, "Wow." Everyone liked the look of that new tech park? Is that beautiful? People tell me all the time, "That's gorgeous, updated." Wait till this new corner gets done. Their first image of Elk Grove is going to be the new shopping area, new housing component. It's going to be, wow. Look how beautiful that is. The roofs, everything we had them put in, the extra ambiance, that bridge going across, we unveil that with the lighting, the sign on it and all that. People are going to go, "Wow." They're going to be proud to see that. That's the other benefit. So it keeps our taxes low. It gives you new development, new image, new approval. How many people tonight were upset how Sears Harbor's been vacant so long? No one likes looking at a vacant store. We're trying to change that image. We're trying to fill things up. We're trying to redevelop them. Again, we can't fill all of our stores. Not enough, it just doesn't work in today's society. So you're going to see more of this work coming in the future. I can tell you that now. I've been saying that for years. Other corners are going to be redeveloped. If we don't stay at the cutting edge, we're going to fall behind, and then it's a death spiral. And we're not going to let that happen in Elk Grove. So that's where we're coming from.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Yep.
Yes?
Hello, everyone. Uh, Jeff Snyder, 55-year resident of Elk Grove. So, living in my fifth location here. So I think it's really nice the way you did the introductions of the staff and a little bit about what everybody does. I, I know many of you, and, uh, it's good to hear that. So several things. And, um, I'll try to keep it pretty positive, Mayor. I don't want to get you wound up, okay? And, and, and you know, I'm here to make the town better too, okay?
Jeff, I want to give you a compliment. I'm serious. Everyone knows Jeff Snyder that follows Facebook. We all know, which is fine. You were at the school board meeting and stuff. It's good. He gives a bow. But I do give him credit. I'm serious. Of all the people that sit all day and night on those computers at home, firing shots, all that, they never see the light of day. Jeff, I give you credit. You come out, you express your views, whether we agree or not agree, but I give you credit. You do come out and speak. So I do. I thank you for that. So, appreciate it.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Um, so, so the first item with the Sears Harbor being a hot topic here, one, one thing I believe the village could do, and not just for that facility, but for anything that's been vacant, say, over five years, maybe a bigger facility, 10, 20,000 square foot or bigger, you could make it public that you would offer a, a sales tax rebate because that, to the tenant, that, that's a win-win. We're not generating any sales tax revenue off of the empty space. We know the village gets the home rule tax. And why not dangle that offer out there for longtime vacant facilities? You know, put it out to the, to the developer and, and the village's marketing department and, and offer that. So.
Now, that's a good point Jeff brings up. Sales tax, we want to be careful on because why should one person get to pay lower sales tax than the guy next door to him? If I was a business owner next door to that Sears that's been there for 30 years, why all of a sudden you give money to him? Give me money. I've been here 30 years helping the village. But we do have other incentives that we do offer. So there's other incentives we can offer that is more fairly deserved. So we do offer that. So we do offer that. Sue Dees is our economic person, before that we had Josh Grodson. We have a person that works every day, all day, nothing but attracting businesses to Elk Grove, all the time. So we do work with vacant store owners, we do work with them trying to attract, we do work with them with incentives that are out there. So you're right, Jeff, it's a good idea, we, we do that now. The problem is incentives don't always drive them there. Sometimes they do, and we've done that with some, sometimes they don't. Planet Fitness, believe it or not, they got an incentive. There's incentive to help with the fitness type of use, all that, they, they get one. That's why, and they're doing well. So we do do that if it fits and that, and we're willing to help even on Sears. We've, we've talked to other developers or potential tenants before.
Another option might be sending the village staff to these franchise shows that they hold in Rosemont. These are people gonna open franchises and they'll be looking for a place to open it, setting up your booth there and, and you know, those type of shows is an opportunity.
Go ahead.
We've done that before and we've had, we presented ideas like this to the different shopping center owners. Whether or not they can close the deal, it's kind of between the two parties.
Understand, but you're still bringing more, more prospects, the, the, the masks eventually gets you a winner, right?
That's a good idea.
Yep. On another topic, sustainability, we have the new sustainability group. So a lot of us see these, the streetlights around Elk Grove. And, and I know we, we have a special deal with ComEd where we give them for ten dollars a year and thus we don't want to invest in, in the streetlights. But you know, LED streetlights would cut the greenhouse, the carbon footprint on streetlights by eighty, eighty-five percent.
And Jeff, we're starting to change them out.
Okay.
We are doing that already.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are putting LED lights in, more and more. What's the street that you can really notice on over down the west side? There, Fox Run, by Fox Run, you'll see a lot of them.
I, I noticed those over there, but they've been there for a year or two.
Yeah, we're starting, we're starting to change them out.
If we could just, whenever a bulb goes, that's the time to change it, right?
And that's, the lighthead and all that, that's what we're doing, because we gotta change them all out and stuff. So we are doing that already, we're not doing a bad rush, mad dash, but each year we're doing more and more. So we agree, because remember, you're standing right now in the first green village hall in the state of Illinois. So we did this before it became popular. So we're on top of it, but we are slowly doing it, so we are.
Yep, all right, that, that's good to hear. So with that said, at a previous meeting I brought up the Carbon Disclosure Project. That's the not-for-profit international organization where your organization reports all its energy consumption on a monthly basis and thus you're compared to similar organizations on your municipality's carbon footprint compared to municipalities all around the world of similar size. So it's a, it's a project that I entered data for my employer for the last fifteen years and we're proud, we're, we're gonna be carbon neutral by twenty thirty, ten years ahead of most companies, so. But it applies to municipalities, so it seems like a, a small administrative cost to give yourself a lot of data to see what impact you're making on the carbon footprint.
Maggie, overseeing the sustainability program, something to keep in mind.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Couple more things, more of the, I'll call it the, I like to call it the customer experience and you could translate that to resident experience. Because the, the village sells a product and it's these services that you provide to the residents. The police protection, fire protection, water, sewer, road sidewalks, right? So, so being, we're, we're, we're customers essentially, and, and the customers' expectations grow over time. We, we get used to it, everybody wants a little more. So, so I, I've been in, in quality and, and sustainability the last fifteen years at my employer. So you get to learn, learn about a lot of this stuff about the customer experience. So the, the next few things, I, I, I'm gonna talk about that because attracting residents here with some of the other challenges, with the slightly increasing crime and challenges with the schools, we, we've got to make that resident or customer experience better and better.
Slightly increasing crime, where's there slightly increasing crime? Are you talking about Elk Grove?
Well, I, I-
Because that's not numbers we've seen.
Well, last year I came home and, and five police cars down my street, we had a home invasion to some seniors living right down the block from me, so I, I mean-
But you said increasing crime, you live in statistics, it says Elk Grove's got increasing crime?
Well, I'm generalizing, but in fifty-five years I've never had a home invasion while people were home, just, just twenty houses away. So that's my experience or perception.
Now, just so people know, our numbers are actually doing better, we, we don't have a crime problem. Everywhere you worry about crime, but we're not seeing an increase here in Elk Grove. You have nothing to worry about. Does crime happen? Yes. I mean, the biggest thing now is catalytic converters, but you're fine in Elk Grove. Because someone sees one thing, doesn't mean it's happening all over the place.
Okay, well, so, so, so-
The schools are something we're looking at?
You can spin numbers anyway sometimes.
Right.
The schools are definitely-
But you're talking about like home break-ins, stuff like that? That's, we're not seeing that in our residential area, on the numbers.
Okay, you may have it data-wise, but you know, perception is what, what people believe. So one thing we noticed, we, we, we used to typically count on the police driving on every residential street every night because we would see the parking tickets if somebody left their, their, their car in the street. So I, I just don't see that in our neighborhood. So I, I just, I see people's cars left out regularly and it's not somebody who's calling them in, it's, it's somebody who forgot. And we don't see the parking tickets anymore, so that tells me we're not getting the late night, you know, reviews because maybe the officers are extra busy dealing with other issues. So you know, I, I'm concerned, we don't have the level of-
Do they have any officers just being nice and not issuing someone a ticket?
Well, I-
Have you had a bad thing?
Or is somebody calling in their vehicle at night?
Yeah, you know, it's more than a rare exception.
So you're saying you have not seen a police car drive down your street?
Well, when they drive down my street, they're always giving somebody a speeding ticket, so.
All right, but at any, you're saying they're not patrolling your street?
Overnight, I do not believe we have the presence. Again, you can tell me how, do they go down every street every night or what's the policy?
Yeah, we have, first off, all of our cars are GPS, we know where every car is every second of the day. They go down streets. Now, do they go down streets more often where areas there might be some issues than other areas where there's not issues? Sure. Do we have records like, for example, maybe a house on, where you had a break-in, let's say a house on Briarwood hasn't had a break-in in thirty-eight years. Well, is that a street we should go on more often or one that's down the street, Wildwood, that's had three break-ins in the past year and a half? Well, I think we are best to focus our manpower where we're having some issues to try to stem that than other ones. But again, our police patrol everything and we go like everyone else, we watch our numbers, we see how crime's going, we're seeing the number of calls, issues, and we base our patrols on that. Will we tell people what we do? No. I'm not gonna tell the other side, like I said before, you don't give the other coach your game plan. I'm not gonna tell the crooks what we're doing either. I want them not to know what we're doing so we can catch them. So, but our police are out there. So have you had an issue at your place?
Not, not in recent years.
Okay, so that's good then.
Okay, maybe one thing that's happening because the police do turn around on Cass and Deborah every time they give somebody a ticket, maybe that's skewing your GPS data because it's showing they turn down there three or four times a day.
It could.
Well, then you're very, you're very protected over there now.
That's during the day though.
So you're, people could be mad at you now because you get all the police.
Good point.
That's why his neighbor's house got broken into, they're by his house, not by their house. Go ahead, we're just joking.
I know. So bicycle trails are multi-use sidewalks, right? So we have the new, recent, I think a couple summers go on Beasterfield between Rowling and, and Meacham.
Actually goes all the way down, connects up to, the whole trail goes up to Plum Grove Road. And last year, this past summer, we just opened up the Meacham one, that's going from three ninety all the way down. And we just finished Oakton, did we just finish Oakton? Yeah, we just finished the bike trail in Oakton. We're becoming the bike capital with trails of the Midwest. We're doing a lot of them, we're very proud of it, but thank you for noticing.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's good, a couple comments, and, and I've been a biker my whole fifty-five years here and, and from the police department, that my memory was Mike the Talking Bike they used to bring to Salt Creek School and he would teach us bicycle safety by the Elk Grove Village Police, so that, I always remember that. So my comment on the trail, again, the trails, again, happy, thrilled to see them, stepped that up and speeded it up. A couple of issues with the quality of trails. So the, the sidewalk, the, between Rowling and, and Meacham along Beasterfield, there, there needs to be a specification on the flatness of that concrete because when they put those control joints in, they're, they're creating a hump in it and it's, it's like a washboard riding on that thing. And some of the speed bicyclists, they ride on the road, they won't even ride on it. So I would urge, you know, who's ever in charge of that to get some kind of a specification on the flatness of it.
Kenny's making a note now.
Yeah, I can comment on that. We've actually started using saw joints, saw cut joints. So if you go to the one on Oakton that we put in this year, there's no tool joint. So it's a smoother ride, it's also much better if you have little wheels, like roller blades or something like that.
That is awesome, that is great to hear, that deserves an A-plus for that one.
So Jeff, our staff did something without your help. That's impressive.
That's what we want to see, proactive. I don't, I don't need to come here and do this, but that's awesome to hear, so. The next thing is on the width of it, and I know, you know, we, we have limited right-of-way, but I do see some places where we could've got another foot or two wide and, and I ride those, those, those multi-use a lot. And when you have a couple walking, which is pretty common, they, they end up kind of hogging the whole, the whole sidewalk and, you know-
They do that on Rusty Woods.
Yeah, I understand, and I usually-
Kenny, how wide is most of our bike trails like that, multipurpose use?
A lot of it we've been putting in at eight feet just due to lack of right-of-way where we can get them. So like the Beasterfield one, I believe, Meacham, mostly eight feet. We have some that are ten feet along Arlington Heights that went in last year. So we're putting in ten feet where we can, and if we can't fit that, just due to right-of-way width, parkway width, we're doing eight.
And eight feet is what, double the normal size of a sidewalk?
Yeah, sidewalks normally four or five.
Yep, so eight feet's better than nothing.
And maybe those on Beasterfield were the first, first ones, because there's some sections that are not as narrow. There is a lot of it that's ten feet, there's some that's eight, but there's some that's more like six there, and that's where it's a challenge.
Hang on, Jeff.
What I would say on Beasterfield is part of the reason that probably shrunk down is because we didn't want to rip out all the mature trees.
Okay. All right, one more thing on the bicycle trails. So I, I walk frequently on Nergie along by the retention, like I call it Lake Nergie there, just, just west of Rowling. And that's a heavily used sidewalk because you have the apartments, the-
Jeff, Jeff, that's county. That's a county sidewalk.
I understand, but, but I think it was on the, the, the map for a possible bicycle trail. And I believe at one of the meetings we talked that the village actually built most of the sidewalks along the county roads.
Kenny, is that on a bike trail? I've, I've never seen.
It's a sidewalk current.
Talking about by Johnson Park?
Yeah.
Hey, here's some areas where it might be, it would be nice in the future where we can, so it's not currently a bike trail.
No, no. So, so my comment on it, it, it's heavily used by pedestrians that, that they walked up to Walmart and, and the stores there from, all the way from Nergie and Sharlie.
And they go to Johnson Park there, they fish, they do whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and, and just tonight, I, I was walking there in two groups, some, they had grocery bags and everything, you know, so that's very common, and we also bicycle along there. So a few challenges. The county's guard rail to, to prevent cars from going into the, into the, the lake or, or off the road, the backside of it is raw steel I-beams, pointed corners. It, it is so dangerous if somebody falls, you have bicyclists and people walking on that four or five-foot wide sidewalk.
Kenny, are they gonna fix that as part of the roadwork or no?
I don't believe that was in the plan, but we can talk about that, they can put a rail on the backside of it.
So another, make it so it's not sharp or dangerous?
Yeah, typically when it's a, a bike trail, they'll put, they'll, they will put a backing on it, a piece of wood typically. So we can talk to them and see if we can get them to do that.
Okay, we'll check.
Yeah, that'd be great, because by high school, the guard rail has, is a wood like a, a two-by-eight on the backside, so that, that, that would be very helpful, so.
We're glad to do it.
All right. On the, the residential street repairs, so, well, it's nice we're stepping that up. But I have, and maybe this, just take this as a tip to look at these areas. So the areas around, neighborhoods around Salt Creek School, really rough shape still, most of those. The area Bradley Place and Parker northwest of Rowling and Nergie, really bad streets, so bad in there, it, it, I bicycle, dangerous to ride a bicycle within three or four feet of the curb because the roads are so rough, some of the curbs really rough in there. And then in the neighborhood I live, Debra Lane, very bad shape and the neighbors have been calling and complaining about it and they said it's not due to be done until twenty-five, so not even next year, so.
Well, I understand this, Jeff, what we did was unbelievable. The project we're doing, the roads, sidewalks, curbs, rear yard drainage, it's tens of millions of dollars we're reinvesting back in the community, but it can't all be done the first year, it's gonna take time. But we had a company come out, every square inch of every street in this village was monitored. They had a machine, right, Mayor? A machine went over and collected data on the depth, on the quality of the base, on the quality of asphalt. We know every street in this village by heart. Then what we're doing now is we're doing the worst first. My street, Trustee Frankie's street is so bad, if you get a chance, go down Brantwood, West Brantwood, from Chelmsford to Arlington Road, and it'll look like a skunk because both sides have asphalt. It was so bad, it couldn't even wait.
And I know people.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, twenty-five is not far out, believe me, compared to everything else.
Because his won't be done for a couple more years, but it was so bad, he had two and three, sometimes six inches of water sitting at his curb for days. That's how bad it was. So we know that, that's why we're being so aggressive. We're doing three times as much roads every year now than we've ever done in our best year before. Am I saying it right?
Yeah, we're resourcing about six miles a year, so our goal's a fifteen-year cycle, so we're trying to get to every street within fifteen years, which is pretty incredible.
And redone, all new curbs. If you go down a street that's been redone, Berkenshire, which I saw a lot, Georgia, tell you, lives by there, Berkenshire, almost every curb was done, almost the whole curves on that street was done, sidewalks, everything. So we're getting to it, but just like Kenny said, we can't get to it all in one year. It's gonna take some time, worst case, first case. Like I say, Trustee Frankie, he's gotta live with that for a couple of years, but we'll eventually get to it. So we're on it, Jeff, we're aware, no question. And what happened was unfortunate, all the towns around us, Schaumburg, Hoffman Estates, Elk Grove, we all got built at the same time in the fifties. And for some reason, it took about sixty years and the roads just like overnight started going, I mean, accelerated like all of a sudden. So we're on it, we appreciate that, but we know every street in this village by heart.
And sidewalk.
And sidewalks, everything, and redone, and even our, our drainage. Look at all the rear drains we're doing now, and no town does that. Going on private property and fixing your backyard drainage that you caused or your neighbor caused, we still do it, we pay for it. So their office is going crazy trying to keep up, but we're gonna get it done, so. We're there, but I appreciate any streets you give us, I know Kenny wrote them down, we'll look at them again. Because some streets may have deteriorated more than when we did the test a couple of years ago and they moved up on list, we'll move them up.
Yeah, that'd be good if you check it.
We will, we'll check them, we appreciate it.
A, a couple of years back when we finished repainting all the streetlight poles, there was a comment in one of the board meetings that next year the, the signage of poles and backs would be painted. Where are we at with that? I'm not seeing it on the west side anyway.
I thought the street signs, Kenny, you know where we're at?
So the replacement of the streets, we've been replacing-
No, the painting of the posts and stuff.
Well, whatever, replacing or repainting?
Right, we've been replacing a lot of them, that, that's broken into a four-year plan that we are doing year two yet this year. The signs are currently in fabrication, so we'll be halfway done after this year and then budgeting for the next quarter of them for next year.
So that's, we did the streetlights first, those are all done, they're all done. So now we're on the signs, so we're working on it, we'll get them, they'll all be done.
So within two years, they'll all be cleaned up?
Two more years, they'll all be done.
Well, this year and then two years after this year.
Right, yeah. We're on it. Now, you bring up a good point, please people, if you have garage sales, don't tape your signs to the light posts. The new tape, the Gorilla Tape and all the stuff they got, it can actually affect the coating on the paint. So please don't do that, I cry every time I go by. We've got the most beautiful lights and then you can see sometimes they pull up and you see the paint peeling, you see the old, so. But if you can, hold off on that because our lights are beautiful, they did a good job. So we're on top of that.
Along those same lines on protecting the streetlights, so we, we have a pole down at, at the south end of Cass where, where the village had replaced concrete and there was no protection put on the pole, so when they were pouring the concrete, all the spatter went on the newly painted streetlight and, and damaged the paint on that one. So again, something that needs to be in your specifications, that, that your concrete workers protect those things.
Next year's contract, you've got a good point, shoot the kill order if they put in concrete on a stone, okay?
Yeah, don't pay them.
We'll be on it, thank you. Anything else? I know there's other people-
Yeah, one, one, one more thing real quick. So, so, so one thing, you know, with, with the police department having their accreditation and, and, you know, different departments, I, I think you should consider Public Works accreditation like, like Schaumburg has.
Yep, I just said, you pay, you pay attention.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
I said, Public Works, Engineering, you're gonna be hearing a lot of- I said, public works, engineering, you're hearing a lot of things. Those guys are smiling already over there.
Isn't that why we have bans around our fire hydrants now? That was part of-
Stole my thing.
Excellent.
We're on top of it.
That was part of public works.
So, the last area doesn't have credit, accreditation is the administrative part. So, ISO eighteen thousand ninety-one is International Standards Organization accreditation for municipalities for all their administrative ends. So, that would be the, probably the final one that, that you could certify, and that, that gives, that's a global accreditation.
Our administration, our top staff, our manager's office, goes through the toughest ranking that's out there. I'm telling you, Jeff, I'm serious. They rank the highest score, and it's the toughest test and certification get. They got the approval of the mayor. That's what counts most.
Yeah. Well, that ISO counts also.
Yeah, no, that's nothing.
All right, thank you for your time tonight.
Jeff, I'm serious. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? We're doing good? Couple hours, grinding down? Yes, sure, come on down.
Mayor, trustees, Michael Urban, I have a question. There's a incentive with Roy Meadows incentive, where they, I guess, give a sales tax rebate in terms of food, all that type of stuff, back to the business if they're going to build out a retail spot, a particular retail spot? If they, you know, put out so many dollars towards that project, and then there's stuff that the landlord won't do for them? Is that, is that something the village could look into, something that Roy Meadows is doing right now?
We do that now. What, what's, you bring up a good point. You know, we talked about, Jeff brought up, about incentives. There's thousands of incentives you can use. One of the things we're doing with the new development at Arnton's Road Higgins is TIF incentive. We know there's been cleaners over that shopping center since I was born, over there. We know there's issues in the soil beneath that building. So, we're giving incentives for developing that through TIF dollars to help remediate that pollution that's there. We did some work at the gas station. The Shell gas station was torn down. Same gas station there from the time I was a kid. So, we do that. So, some people do sales tax incentives, some towns, some do TIF incentives, like we do at some areas. So, there's a lot of different incentives. We do work with incentives all the time. We have six Bs. You probably read it on the paper, real quick. If you get a building that's been vacant for a period of time, and you reinvest updating it, upgrading it, aesthetic improvements, you can give them a six B, which lowers the property tax for twelve years, ma'am? Twelve years, down to a lower level. We're the king of six Bs. We do a lot of it. But that gets companies coming in, filling vacant buildings, updating. Now, we don't do many now, 'cause we don't have many vacant buildings. But we did, so, we do incentives. I want people to know, we do work with businesses, we do incentives, we partner with them, it makes it better, and that's why we're successful.
Can, can you just clarify, it's just industrial?
Right.
Not any kind of-
Residential, no.
Or retail?
No, not retail. No, there's other things for retail.
Right, right, but the six Bs are just industrial.
Sure, sure, right. So, we have, we do use incentives. We do.
I encourage the village to look into it, instead of just being, you know, minimal with seven B, another option for a commercial, you know, tax incentive, instead of just being the bare minimum. I, I encourage the village to look into that type of incentive that Roy Meadows is currently doing, where there are businesses where if they put X amount of dollars out for the retail spot, for their restaurant, and there's things that the landlord won't do, there's, I mean, it's just a drop in the bucket. We're talking about maybe ten thousand dollars covered, you know, something, just to get those businesses in the door. So, you know, taxes generated for those spaces as quickly as possible, because there are spots in the village right now that are very questionable, that hasn't seen the time of day for quite a long time. I'm talking about the Kmart cafeteria area, their former Audi location way back in that spot. That's a huge challenge as well.
Oh, the, you were talking about where the Staples was and the Audi.
That's a huge challenge.
Be patient on that. That's all we're gonna say.
We look at those things.
And then, also, on vacant property, if we're on that issue right now, O'Hare West Plaza has been vacant for years. Is there anything the village is doing about that?
Is that, you're talking about Lamire Higgins?
Yeah.
That old little, that L-shaped?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, the Blue Shopping Center?
Yeah.
In fact, I'm meeting with the owner Thursday.
Okay, good.
We look at a lot of those things.
Yeah, and then right across the street, Firestone Station's been standing all these years.
The owner submitted plans to that about a month ago. We're already working on it.
And also, I just wanna highlight one thing with the Bird King situation as well, down the street. Marathon Gas Station right next door, the, the signage is completely hollowed out. So, it's getting to a spot where it's like, why can't the village just step in?
Jeff builds, Jeff builds marathons.
No, you're talking about by Heavenly Bodies over there?
You're talking that one, yeah.
That's, that's not ours in the first place.
Yeah, it's in the village. Jeff, the Bird King and the marathon's in the village.
Okay, not Heavenly Bodies.
It's owned by a neighboring property, and Mr. Nick about X Mountain, we've been talking to that owner too. So, we're talking to a lot of people. Trust me. Facebook talks about the people we're talking to a lot of times, too. A lot of different shopping areas and stuff, so we're, we're working on things.
And then, about the ONCC, why isn't the village a member of the ONCC? Would it affect the SOC membership?
No. Real quick, I know it's getting late. ONCC is the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission. When we're in the battle for air expansion, Governor Edgar is looking for a way to get out of his commitment not to expand the airport. And the way he was gonna get out of his commitment to protect us was that if enough towns, the majority of towns around the airport voted to allow the expansion, he would lift his thumb off it and let the expansion happen. So, to do that, they formed an ONCC commission. We said we'd join it. If the commission was made up of only towns that border the airport, the towns that have the real impact should have the decision what happens there. We thought that was fair. We had no problem. Instead, the ONCC is made up of towns of Palatine, towns as far out as Niles. All these towns have almost no impact. They got on the commission. Why? Because they would get enough towns that weren't impacted by the airport, they could vote to allow the expansion. Governor could lift his thumb off and say, okay, we had a fair open air, and you got the vote, you lost, have a nice day. They'd stack it, they'll vote us. We said we're not getting part of that game. And if you talk to the Mayor Vitasko, the Mayor Wooddale, they'll say it hasn't changed one bit. Why isn't the Mayor Vitasko who borders the airport, Mayor Wooddale who borders the airport, Mayor Vincentville who borders the airport, all the towns, Shiller Park Mayor? Why aren't they on leadership roles, ONCC? Why do you got the attorney for Niles? The attorney, not the mayor, the attorney for Niles. Why do you have a transportation person on Schaumburg? Not the Mayor Schaumburg, transportation person running the committees, ONCC. It's a game. Why do they deny us to have our plant fairly looked at with the one they submitted? It's a game. We don't play politics. We do what's right. So, that's why we haven't joined, and we're fine.
So, the village chooses not to be part of the commission?
We chose not to be part of it, and we stand by that to this day.
Okay. Also, about properties, La Quinta, White Castle being demolished. What's the goal of purchasing these buildings, like five hundred Higgins, just recently purchased and gonna be demolished? The Gang Graffiti Office Building, twenty-three hundred Higgins Road, which I believe the village could have probably condemned and probably got that for free. But what's the overall goal of demolishing these properties? Because the former properties like they is in and Phoenix nightclub, Hunter's nightclub, way back in the day, where those properties are located, the concrete, everything, weeds, everything, it's cracks everywhere, and it's come in disrepair. So, I don't, I don't know what's the overall goal of those properties.
So, the goal is this. There's an old saying, do you wanna be the driver of the bus, or you wanna ride on the bus? We wanna be the driver of the bus. So, when these properties come available, we wanna dictate what's going in there. We wanna make sure we get good uses going in there. For example, the shopping center in Arnton's Road and Higgins. The bowling alley was for sale for years, couldn't sell it. We had used car lots looking to go in there. Used car lots. So, we wanna make it a giant used store place. Isn't that a great image? When you pull into Elk Grove, that's the first thing you're gonna see? Big on that curved roof, used store, self-stored? So, we jumped in, and we bought it. Now, we're gonna have a beautiful new shopping district, beautiful new housing component, row homes. It's gonna be gorgeous. When that gets, I can't wait. But we wanna control. Same thing happened with La Quinta. We knew it came available. White Castle was, was gone, was closed. We jumped at the opportunity. Now, we get to control what goes in there. That's another inch away into the village. We bought the hotel, the Best Western Midway, across the street from La Quinta. We bought that. We got now developing into a beautiful, how many millions, hundreds of millions are they putting in that new development there? Gorgeous. It's gonna be, but we're able to control the use of it. Five hundred and five seventy Higgins, right there by the whole Higgins corridor, the new tech park, new Rose Garden, you know all that? That way, we can control what's coming in to upgrade it. You're talking about letting things go. We're trying to get it upgraded. Look at Rose Garden. How many of you go on to Rose Garden, the new Rose Garden? Honestly, do you like the new, you wanna go back to the old one? Or do you wanna go to the new one? The new one. I mean, let's be honest, I'm being facetious. Okay, how'd that happen? We bought Sweet Baby Ray's. We cut the deal. You asked for incentive? We gave incentive to Chris and Alex to move the Rose Garden where they're at to the new location. That place is gorgeous, isn't it? It's gorgeous. That happened because of us. That would not have happened if we didn't do that. It would not have happened. So, that's why we do that. We buy things to get a chance to it. I mentioned I'm meeting with a guy that's at the corner of Higgins and Landmeyer, that strip shopping center. He's meeting with me to talk about the property we own next to him on Thursday. A new development coming. The people, we get it, we meet with them, we develop it. That's why we're doing it. We wanna be the catalyst to make that happen. Again, we wanna be the driver of the bus, not a passenger on the bus. And we did all that without raising taxes. Not bad.
I have two other things to end with. One of them is the Arthur J. Rogers Industrial Park being turned into possibly four data centers. There's over a hundred and ten companies that are gonna be impacted for these two phases of construction. I find it kinda appalling to have a hundred, a hundred and ten businesses affected, and it's just gonna be replaced with data centers. The sales tax, all that stuff that's generated from people visiting, working at those establishments. I was at the plant commission.
Thank you for coming, folks. Thank you.
Voice in my opinion. So, I encourage the village to work with those a hundred and ten businesses to find as much compatibility with their rent, the spots they have currently now, because I understand the industrial park is at one percent, you know, vacancy rate and stuff like that, which is great. But to find, you know, those spots that are compatible with the spot you have now, with the companies that are gonna be affected, just make sure everything, you know, falls in line with them. Because I hate to, you know, tell Mothers Milk Bank and Cabo Stone Oven and, you know, Windy City Tool Bank and all these other great companies and their gourmet cheesecake, you know, just great companies, you know, they may go elsewhere.
You're working with them as you speak. The Milk Bank, we're working with, we're working with all those businesses. We are. And it's gonna be over a period of several years, so we're, we're working with them as we speak to them now.
And then, one thing at the end, too, you know, and this on a light note, the concert series. Is there any way that the residents could submit their choices for the concerts, performers?
Get in line. I probably get a hundred different ideas every year. I'm more than welcome to hear any ideas you have. Trust me, it's not easy to get those put together. So, you got ideas, bands, please let me know. Example, last year, we had a band called All American Rejects. You could've offered me five million dollars a year ago, and I would've never known who they were at all. Someone gave me the idea. So, we want ideas. The board, give it to the board. We share ideas every day. So, if you got names of bands, please give them to us. We wanna hear them.
All right. So, I just wanna, you know, end with what I just said. Maybe the village could look into some type of system where, you know, they could submit their choices or have some type of survey put out for the concert series, and, you know, what categories should the village look at?
Just let us know. If you got ideas, tell us.
Send us an email.
We hear from people all the time.
See more than, you know.
Send a letter.
Yeah, just send a message. Yeah.
Okay, great.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I wanted to.
That's all I have. Thank you, board. Thank you, Mayor, for your time. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming. Take care. Okay, I know it's been a couple hours. We're not gonna leave. Does someone, anybody else have anything else? I'm happy to hear it. Are you sure? Well, first off, thank you again. We appreciate you caring about the community, willing to take time to come here. I know I get long-winded sometimes. That's why the attorney calls me a little windy. But we think sometimes you need to know the whole picture while we do things. We're not perfect. We know that. We listen to you. We get ideas from you. I mean, heck, did you ever see, see a day when you thought, shake, shake Jeff Snyder's hand here tonight? See? We can work together with anybody. So, again, thank you for coming tonight. Drive home safe. Thanks again. God bless. Thank you.